Kathy, do we still call the roll?
We do not. We'll need to do the public hearing for the budget.
All right.
Should we ask if there's public comment?
Actually, public comment. Kathy, is there any public comment?
There's none.
Then can we have a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget?
So moved.
Second? Someone?
Second.
Okay.
Kathy?
Okay, let's see, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Do we have Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
And Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is open.
We are now in the public hearing for the fiscal year 24 budget. If there's anyone here who would like to say anything regarding that, please speak your mind. Hearing no comments. Can we have a motion to close the 2024 budget hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Okay, let's see, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed.
Are there any changes to the agenda? David? Hearing none. We will continue with the agenda. Martha?
All right, I'll take the superintendent's report. Couple just informational pieces for everyone. One is summer school 2023 is officially over. It ended last week. Another good summer school session. Special thanks to Kim Hefner, our Hollywood principal, who is also our summer school principal, and to all of our teachers who worked and taught during summer school. We can bring a more robust report to all of you at a later date if that's something. It particularly may be under Education Committee if there's an interest in that. We had about 236 children that attended summer school this year. 94, what we call seats, in skill building classes. So that was some of the additional math and reading intervention that children were recommended for. So that's a, those are strong numbers. And again, I think it was a great success. So wanted to share that and thanks to Kim and to our staff. Then as we quickly pivot, obviously this new-
Martha, can I ask a quick question on summer school? Do we initiate any type of surveying at the conclusion of parents? Just particularly on some of the, not the skill building, but like the enrich, I forget what they're called. The fun ones?
Yeah, enrichment, right.
Enrichment ones, the fun ones. As my daughter says.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm gonna have to ask Kim because I know we've done it at times. I don't know if we do it annually. I have to find that out, so.
Just as a parent of a summer schooler, I was curious at the conclusion if there would be something just to voice opinions on.
Yeah. Yeah, I honestly don't know for sure, so I'm gonna have to find out. I'll let you know. Anything else about summer school? We have our upcoming Institute Day, so our teachers, actually all of our new teachers returned this week. They've been with us Tuesday and Wednesday and tomorrow yet on Thursday. Then all of our staff will return on Monday, August 21st, which is this coming Monday, as well as August 22nd. So our staff will have two days of professional learning together. And then our students will come back on August 23rd. But I wanted to attach the schedule for all of you so you can see the work that the district will be taking on on August 21st and 22nd. And I've shared with all of you and invited you too, if you are interested in joining us for our keynote speaker on Institute Day. That's Dr. Doug Bolton, who's a child psychologist and really talks about schools and their importance as really caring and healing communities for children. So I've had the opportunity to hear him speak before and he's great. And I think he'll resonate well with our staff, continue with our strong social emotional learning messages. So we're also meeting at, our staff is going to meet at the Brookfield Zoo Discovery Center for the first time, trying out that space. It is hard to find a place for our entire staff to meet together and not be just in our school auditorium. School auditorium is nicely upgraded, but sitting in an auditorium is sometimes not the most engaging way when a lot of speakers really prefer that more of a workshop model and having staff able to sit at tables and move around a little bit. So that's what we're gonna be doing at the Discovery Center on the 21st.
Can I ask how that was done when we were in the auditorium?
Well, so I would say we just do, we make it work, right? And we have. We've also used the North Riverside Village Parks and Recreation area, another area where we had an opportunity for our staff to sit at tables. They're under construction this year. Parking is not quite as easy there as it is at the Discovery Center at the zoo. So the zoo's not charging us. They're just charging us for the food that we eat, so we'll let you know. Right now, we've heard really positive comments from our staff saying, oh, we're gonna be at the zoo. And sometimes they get nervous when they're off campus, so they don't prefer that. So we're hoping it's a great success there.
For the Tuesday sessions, can you remind me what GCN training is?
Yes, Global Compliance Network. So those are the required trainings that all staff need to, so it's often, bloodborne pathogens is the one that every staff member takes every year, how to deal with bloodborne injuries, you know, interactions, often anti-harassment, anti-bullying. There's a lot of things in policy that you've, you know, that are required for all staff to participate in that kind of training. Food allergies is another one, although that's then kind of usually reiterated by our school nurse live and in person. So a handful of them, about 17 or 20 of them. And they're short modules, usually probably like 20 to 30 minutes depending on the topic. And it's a, you know, it's a quick and efficient way for staff to learn some of the required elements of their roles.
So some of it is meeting legislative requirements, just here's these training things that you needed to know that we require, how you use the FPP.
Yeah, I would say most school districts use this GCN set of modules.
Thank you.
Is there a dress code for this event?
The tee shirt, I think. People have enough to pick them up in advance or change in a restroom, or they can wear whatever they'd like to wear, so, yeah. Not required. Anything else about it? But seriously, if you're able to come, I know some of you have already shared with Kathy that you're able to join us, and I know a lot of you, it's a work day, so not able to join us. We're also launching our District 96 celebration video on Monday. So after it's been released, we'll put it up on our website. And if you miss it on Monday, we'll make sure everybody has a chance to see it. But we're excited. As you know, last year, we contracted with West 40 to provide a video that would sort of tell our strategic plan story. And it does tell our strategic plan story, I think, in a very positive way. And it also, I think, just celebrates the great work going on at District 96. So we're excited to share that. Student enrollment, I have an overview for you as the board looks at every year. I know you have it as an informational item every month of the year, but in particular at the start of the year, it tends to be a more interesting item. We continue to use our student assignment algorithm process. We now have Blythe, a true two-section school at all grade levels. And just again, sort of anecdotally and impressions, I feel like our enrollment is as balanced as in my, now going into my eighth school year, it's ever felt to me. So I think it is that balance of Blythe as a two-section school. The algorithm just seems to be a smoothly used tool for us to make those assignments and feels pretty good right now.
Interesting that Hollywood has both relatively on the higher side of the classes and then classes with only 12 or 12 kids.
And when I see that, I just don't think there's a rhyme or reason to it. I think it's-
I was going to ask that about the overall totals. Some grades, first grade really down, but kindergarten more than makes up for it.
Yeah, and then you try, we notice which grade levels are larger. It doesn't seem to necessarily have a predictable pattern to it. I think there's just some ebb and flow to enrollments and the ages of children in the community.
That's exactly-
Yeah. Does this report, the data show registrations that are, like, people who have registered but are perhaps still incomplete? Or is it only, because you know, 11th, 12th hour, there might be some people getting forms in at the district?
Yeah, this is, this is real students that are registered and enrolled, and if they have some missing pieces, they're still in the report.
They are still in the report.
Yeah, so there could be some fluctuation. Because sometimes when people aren't complete, it's because they're really not coming. Very few incomplete at this stage are registered.
So this is fairly-
Pretty good job of bothering parents until it's done. And also, Hauser's schedules came out yesterday. And so if you didn't get your schedule, you were probably calling the district office because it might have meant that there was a piece of your registration that was incomplete. So, but it's a great question, but it should be what we really anticipate, the real children who are coming on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's so interesting. I did, obviously, having an incoming sixth grader, I worked on fifth grade games night, district-wide fifth grade games night last year. And I think we had like something like 190 or something, and now we're at like 172 incoming. So yeah, I guess maybe some families choose to go elsewhere for middle schools or-
Yeah, and again, it just like, I know we got a handful of new eighth graders today, today, you know, so.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, and we have had, I think, what is our, one of our larger class sizes?
192.
They're the same.
Fourth grade is 198, seventh and eighth are 192.
Yeah, so we're very full up on fourth graders. Again, why, I don't have an answer for you, so. Anything else about enrollment? Our school lunch program, families have all received a letter about our new school lunch program that will now be offered at all five of our schools. As you all know, we've had a lunch program at Central and Hauser for many years. So there will be a school lunch available to all families who are interested. Hollywood and Ames and Blythe, where we haven't had that before. So we're still working with Quest as our consulting agreement, and they really helped us making sure we had the facilities, the equipment, et cetera, to run lunch programs. It will be cold lunches to begin with, and then sort of, we had talked about this, what I call a hybrid lunch. I don't think that's the right technical term, where there's gonna be some warm items and some cold food items, so. But mostly, it looks like they're starting the year with an opportunity for sandwiches and wraps and that kind of thing. It's all on the website. It's all paid for through Pushcoin, and the process is underway for this all to happen on the first day of school. And I think, you know, for families, this was something that the board had looked at, that we had all looked at as a convenience item for families, having an affordable lunch available at the school. And then obviously, for our children that qualify for a free and reduced cost lunch, it's something that really, I think, provides just sort of a balance of how we've always done it by providing a bag lunch from the Hauser kitchen to children. But it was something that I know our social workers and our school team always worked very hard on to make sure that it was very seamless in how it appeared to other children in terms of who was getting a free lunch. Now that same lunch is gonna be available to all children, whether they're paying for it or it's free to them. That's something that is not made visible to the children at all. It's the, they scan a QR code, and if it's free, there's nothing pulled out of their Pushcoin account, and if it's something that costs money, it's pulled from their Pushcoin account.
After, after say, a month or so, can you let us know how well the process has gone in terms of, we have the Dear District 96 Families letter and some fairly clear, I think, instructions on how to do it, but how well do people follow the instructions?
Yeah, I'm curious too, just on the, you know, I don't know the exact exemptions are made, but you know, we thought this was something that families in the district were looking for, so hopefully we see that they are in fact, I'm presuming perhaps some Pushcoin accounts are starting to get funded in anticipation of using it. But yeah, maybe every, it doesn't have to be a monthly like our old COVID updates, but every couple months is seeing the, yeah, the use. And I think kids get used to it as they see their friend eating something like, that looks good, I wanna get lunch on that day.
Yeah. I'm only laughing because it's really not funny, and I can be, but Angela and I looked at it today because we met with the REC and they were asking about, and there's tuna fish on the first day and egg salad on the second day. And I'm just not sure how that was decided.
Hope they can-
They didn't pull the kids.
Yeah, right, I think there is a sun, water, and jelly option also available.
Yeah, both the process and just like how much is-
So we could bring something more detailed, like to October cow, maybe, Jim, and then I'm thinking we could look at, kind of like we do with enrollment, we could actually probably keep an informational item on the board agenda, even if we don't have it as a discussion point, just keeping it-
Just because it's new?
Yeah.
And I don't, it's not supposed to be an overburdenly, burdensome request, but it's new.
Yeah, yeah.
We talked a lot about it.
Yeah, I'm curious too. And we'll decide if the egg salad, tuna salad sells as well as the macaroni and cheese or whatever.
Kind of disappointed that you guys don't like the chicken, the egg salad.
I'm certain my kids would not even-
The other thing I just wanted to mention is the school board. We submitted a recognition application to the Illinois Association of School Boards based on all the great work that this board education has done and continues to do. So those applications are under review, and we would hear, Kathy checked today, I think, at the end of, perhaps at the end of August, beginning of September. So we'll keep you updated on that. And that is the superintendent's report.
All right. Next is the consent agenda. Could the board secretary please read the consent agenda? And at what point do we allow for pullouts?
At the end.
At the end.
Yeah, at the end, well, we'll read the contents, then we'll ask for pullouts.
Thank you.
Then we'll move, make a motion.
Sure, tonight's consent agenda consists of minutes of the following previous meetings, our board self-assessment meeting on June 6th, along with the closed session meetings on that same evening, June 6th, the June 21st regular business meeting minutes, along with the closed session meeting minutes from June 21st, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of June 30th, July 19th, July 31st, and August 16th, the catalyst for educational change contract for an ELA consultant, the EdRed dues, the Metro Chicago Mathematics Initiative contract for coaching, and the review of closed session minutes of the previous six months.
I believe we need to pull the review of the closed session minutes for the previous six months off the agenda because that is the closed session item we need to revisit later today. Would that be correct?
Correct.
I believe so, yes. And we just ran out of time. We didn't-
Yeah, we just ran out of time.
Kathy, is there a time requirement on that? Do we need to come back into open session after our post-meeting closed session to vote on whether or not we're keeping the closed session minutes closed? Like, or do we have another one?
Wesley and I, Wesley and I spent a bunch of time earlier last week talking about this, and there are some provisions in the law about reasonable accommodation. So I think saying we have the review coming up and then we vote on it next time around, we should be okay?
Oh, okay. Thank you for bringing that.
Yes, but our intent is to comply with the law. So aside from that, pullout, any others? Does anyone want to discuss any other specific consent agenda item? And if not, Kathy, can you call the roll?
We need to make a motion first.
Or a motion.
Just before, sorry, I know you just mentioned if there was any discussion. Just real quick, for curiosity, Martha, you may not know this, but for EdRed, I know obviously we're like tier four based on our enrollment, that's how our dues are calculated. Generally speaking, do you think dues have remained the same? I just professionally, I'm part of organizations that whose dues keep kind of increasing. And I didn't look up last year's contract, if it was somewhat comparable. I think the amount is, I don't have an issue with it, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'd have to do an analysis to give you a clear, clear answer on that, but I remember looking at it, thinking it wasn't anything significantly.
I think it was the year before where it changed to be more conforming to the different tiers and what the appropriate amount was for dues for each tier of schools, so.
I think we took more advantage this year of resources of being a member of EdRed, so.
Thank you.
And some of that was also Wesley. I know he attended a legislative, I forget which event.
The legislative dinner? Yeah, they have dinners.
Yeah, we went to one of the trainings and, you know, their meetings and their webinars.
They send out emails every month or when new legislative items come up for people to be aware of. Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, could someone please make a motion?
Let's see, is there a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented minus the review of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy?
Okay, Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps? Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Consent agenda passes.
Are there any board member comments as we start this new school year?
I will say, as a parent of a summer school attendee, I definitely liked Stephanie's idea about a survey. That would be very interesting to hear if that's been done in the past or if that could be done in the future. That just seems like that would be a good thing to do. Otherwise, I think it's been, it was a good experience this summer for our daughter to attend. And also, both of my kids are pretty eager to get back to school and see their friends again.
Yeah, just all the sentiments of back to school, really proud of the work that we accomplished over the summer facilities-wise, even just walking around Hauser and seeing some of the new lockers and, you know, things that we kind of voted on, seeing them come to fruition. And of course, just welcome back to, you know, our educators. I hope they have a fantastic school year. I was, you know, kind of joking the other day, saying like, Tag, you're it, you're back in. Yes, I think everybody is ready, but I hope they deserve, had their much deserved summer break, but looking forward to another great academic year in our district.
Very good.
I guess I will make one more comment. As, again, as a parent of kids coming back to school, and as one who took several trips to stores to pick out various items, sometimes not quite conforming with the lists, I guess. I don't know what the process is for reviewing that, but perhaps we should have a policy on that in the future.
I haven't found this particular yellow folder for my daughter, so.
Office Depot is good for the plastic folders.
So we were joking that if it runs, goes missing, no. But yes.
Office, I think Walmart and Office Depot had yellow. Target had white. That was the hard one to track down this year.
Okay, good to know.
And the Sanford magic eraser, erasers, either in pink or white, have, I have not seen them in a store yet.
There's, but then, no policy on, on schools.
But I did add it to our leadership team agenda for a review, yeah.
I think it's nice too, I know parents were discussing like what some of the community supplies are versus individual, what are those used for? Is it for the teachers? Is it for the kids that lose stuff and teachers handed to them? Like, I just didn't know if parents had clarity on what it is they're bringing into the classroom that's, you know, shared supplies your individual student should have, but.
I know it's been reviewed at least once since I've been here.
Oh, so maybe.
It's changed, but I, it's one of those things we could look at in terms of a formal review process, periodic, periodic review process.
Without making teachers' lives harder?
Yes.
Because that's certainly not something I wanna do. Can we look at those lists and see what's truly being used versus gets perhaps intermittent use and maybe? I know it's hard.
Yeah.
All right. Next portion of our meeting is old business. First item on up is the 2024 budget. Jim, I believe that brings us to you.
You should make a motion first.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
A motion to approve, need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we're open for discussion. Jim, go ahead.
Thank you.
Changes since our last meeting.
You're good, you're good.
Balanced budget. The only thing that's different in your presentation and your board book is the FTE analysis that was requested last meeting.
Yes, you added the commentary at the end of the chart. So for other administrators, we had, we are no longer supporting both a special ed director and an assistant director of special ed because we have a one director. She's been promoted. Blythe Park added a fifth grade teacher for one regular education teacher. And then for support staff in cafeteria workers, we have now added four part-time food service workers, which I know you convert that to FTE equivalents, Jim. And then our cafeteria manager, Judy, has somewhat retired, still with us for some advisory capacity, but for budget purposes, she is no longer included. Did anyone have any further questions for Jim regarding the FTE calculations? Although I think, Selena, you were interested in kind of a deeper dive into where the change over time, or am I incorrect in understanding that?
One of the key reasons that I had asked for a little more clarity on some of our specialists were, was just to understand the costs related to the need for extra psychological and social care. And thanks for providing those, Mr. Marhol.
Any other questions for Jim? Kathy, please call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Dave?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item, can we have a motion to approve the change order at Blythe Park?
You should mention the amount, just if you want to-
Yes, that amount is, sorry, give me a moment. Bob did a article on it. This is a net change to the contract of six, sorry, $126,026.90. This is a 3.56% change to the original awarded contract.
So, second.
For discussion purposes, this was a change order to address water that was discovered during excavation of the basement of Blythe Park. And they installed drain tiles, drain tiles and a sump pump, excuse me. And then there were some poor soils that were discovered in the parking lot. And I'll jump away from president role to facilities, neither one of these would typically be well-known without certain amount of geotechnical investigations. Underground work is always generally where you find the most surprises. So any other discussion on this item?
I'm wondering how, how this is affecting the timeline, especially with school fast approaching?
So it all, the work was done. So this is an approval after the fact, because these were things that couldn't wait. They were essentially seen as emergency conditions that would have held up the project had we not moved forward. So, yeah, so this is kind of a formal process of approving the change order items. They are set to demobilize tomorrow. The construction cleaning is scheduled to happen tomorrow, and we are scheduled to have kids there on Wednesday and in the spaces. I think there'll still be some punch list items.
And Ramesh has been on top of the contract.
Ramesh has been very on top of everything, yes.
As expected.
I am appreciative of Ramesh, so, yeah.
I can't say enough about our appreciation for Ramesh.
I heard it was a heated meeting this morning with the construction crew, so it's gonna be done. It looks pretty good. I've been able to walk through it. I mean, it looks messy still, and really, some of the biggest issues to me seem that everything from all that space is all out in the hallway still. So our own custodial crew will be doing some overtime hours over the weekend too, to get it all back together.
When I noticed in, I think it was one of the budget item, or sorry, one of the payables pre-lists, books were stored off-site. When did the books get delivered to the library?
Jim is our moving specialist.
The books, were we talking off-site?
Yes.
Because it wasn't in the same place the store?
I wasn't questioning that. I just, knowing that they're out of off-site, what's the schedule for bringing them back and?
Well, they were scheduled to come in Wednesday. They turned the library over to us, yep, but the shelves aren't there, which is kind of an important part of bringing the books back. Maybe a few days.
Which may have been part of Ramesh's heated meeting with the contractor. Understood.
So we have the, we own the room now, we just need to process it?
We own most of it.
I will add that our September 6th committee, the whole meeting, will be at Blythe Park. And so everyone will have an opportunity to see the new space, which is great. I think we'll meet in the new space. Riverside TV is going to take a look and make sure that space works or something.
Yes. Seeing as there's no further questions, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next item, is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing commencement of social media litigation?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. This was discussed in closed session and unless there's further discussion now. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Alright, I've been in contact with Mr., our president, Mr. Mirrorhead. And we've got the following to say, probably for Bob here. The District 96 Board of Education has made the decision through tonight's resolution to join hundreds of other school districts across the country in an effort to advocate for change within social media platforms. Up to this point, these conversations have been held in closed session, as allowed by state law, because the topic was related to discussing the merits of litigation and whether this district wanted to participate. In order to provide transparency to the community, we would like to outline the key decision, the key aspects of this decisions. As stated in our resolution, the proliferation of widespread access to and use of social media amongst students has created a variety of concerns. These concerns are related to both direct and indirect impacts to the district. We continue to see, hear, and feel a wide range of both positive and negative impacts social media has had on our students and continues to have. Over the past few years, there have been, has been meaningful increase in negative behaviors that can be tied directly to social media. The district must divert resources away from our core mission of educating students and toward mitigating and managing conflict and other negative behaviors during instructional hours. Social media also plays a role in students' mental health and wellbeing. Children are spending an increasing amount of time navigating content on social media. Access to the wrong content can have devastating effects. Our choice to engage in this lawsuit is not a debate over whether social media is good or bad. There are many positive aspects to social media. However, the litigation objectives have both monetary and non-monetary goals. Our decision to engage in this lawsuit focuses on the non-monetary aspects desired, which include changes to content algorithms that prevent age-appropriate content, age verification processes, requiring and strengthening parental controls, improvement processes in processes for schools to report and remove inappropriate content, improve processes for law enforcement to gain quicker access to content related to physical threats of violence. The litigation will be paid through an attorney fee collected as a percentage of potential monetary damages awarded. There will be no direct monetary cost to the district for participating. We will have a small cost related to time spent providing information related to the lawsuit. Any monetary judgment we receive will be used towards mental health resources for our students. We know of 20 other districts, including Riverside Brookfield District 208, that have already made the decision to join this lawsuit. As a feeder to the high school, a district driven to educate our students on appropriate digital citizenship, and a board devoted to advocating for change that supports our community, we are hoping to achieve the non-monetary outcomes this lawsuit is intended to provide. Next item, press plus number 112 policies. This is the second reading and approval. Can we have a resolution? Sorry, a motion for the resolution to approve.
So moved.
Just.
Ms. Gunn?
Yeah, sure, by way of reminder, we reviewed the summer, what do I call it, summer spruce or something? I forget. Five, they were all kind of five-year reviews, a small number of them that we were able to review this summer. So we did the first read during our committee of the whole meeting earlier this month. I think there was discussion around the structure, organizational structure of the 4-100, the insurance management. I can see in board book that Kathy made the updates. Otherwise, I don't believe there was, there was any changes that we were not all aligned with and/or comfortable with the policies as presented. I think perhaps the only one, the only thing I had a question on, I recognize Wesley is not here this evening, on the insurance one. Martha, I'm not sure if discussions were had about including a line about auto insurance.
You know, we reached out to our attorney, we reached out to Illinois Association of School Boards. We shared with Wesley our certificate of insurance and, you know, I think there's a broad interpretation of property as automobile. You know, and Wesley seemed comfortable with it, just in a one-on-one discussion.
Yeah, I think when we mentioned the comprehensive property insurance, a broad range of causes of personal property. We just wanted to, I believed that it also kind of fell under that, so thank you for just closing the loop on it as well. I don't know if there's any further discussion or questions, but, okay, fairly straightforward.
I did not, as long as Wesley is accepting of the explanation from IASB on the insurance, I think we're good. Seeing as no other discussion, Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can I have a motion to?
These we did set up as action items with the self-assessment review, write this.
Well, we have the board board, there's a motion for the board board and board superintendent.
I think we took that off as an action.
It's not an action item on the current.
Yeah, because the board already reviewed those.
Okay, it's, alright.
As part of the self-assessment.
I think we agreed to these as part of our self-assessment.
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing, it's just, it's, okay, that's fine.
No, so on the agenda for new business, we have a.
At least we left it as old business.
We have repeated the board agreements and the board superintendent agreements. And just to note, these are intended to help better align the board and superintendent in terms of communication and interaction and to be more efficient and effective in our respective roles. So is there any other discussion? And this was discussed at our internal closed session.
Yeah, with the Illinois Association of School Board self-evaluation.
Yes, the self-evaluation process.
So making this, posting it publicly and sharing it for, if there's any discussion, but it puts it into the public record.
Yes.
That we decided to require action, because really the board is our, the board, sorry.
We did that at the self-evaluation. Any other discussion necessary? Seeing as none, the next item is not, is also not a action item, but this is a review of intergovernmental agreements with various associated entities. This includes Parks and Recreation for childcare, an IGA with the Village of Brookfield for shared facilities. And I believe this went to childcare and some summer school, summer programs. We have agreements with Riverside Police and Brookfield Police for reciprocal reporting. And this is for police issues. And then that's it, so.
Right, and the board has asked, I think it's a good practice just to review these annually, in front of all of you. For the review and discussion.
So, were there any that, any board member felt will need further discussion or review?
I guess, I just have a general, I guess, a general question regarding the agreements. Just sort of how are, how are they going in general? And, I mean, are they being reciprocal? I.e., I guess, are, are, are we considering everyone to be, I guess, good partners and in good faith, you know, holding these agreements? Specifically with like the Riverside and Brookfield Police Departments and the sharing of information.
Yeah, no, thanks. And David and I talked a little bit in advance of the meeting, too. I would say all of these are going well. I do appreciate the annual review. I mean, these are things that I, you know, that I live through conversation. I think the reciprocal reporting agreements with the local police and fire really, too, are going very well. I think we have a very strong relationship with our local public safety, and I'm very appreciative of that. Same with the IGAs that relate to the before and after care and the shared facilities with the Village of Brookfield. I feel like that Village of Brookfield one is a little bit newer. As you know, that was in, sort of cost for a crossing guard, that they would share our facilities this particular summer. As an example, Hollywood School was off limits because of the tech pointing project and we offered them Ames instead. And that was fine, I was concerned because it wasn't in the Village of Brookfield, that that might be a concern. And we had Riverside Parks and Rec and Brookfield Parks and Rec using Ames this summer, and things really went just fine. So I think everyone was really flexible and made that work for children, which was great. And then before and after care, I did have an opportunity to check in with our principals. And again, I think it is going well. I looked at Riverside Parks and Rec sent me a little bit of enrollment information, and enrollment has gone up some. You know, that might be just changes in our own enrollment at those grade levels, too. But I think that would indicate that this is, again, a really nice service that's offered to families that need it for before and after care, and it's available at all four of our elementary schools. I also noticed that the number of children granted scholarships for that service has also gone up in their data. So I think, again, that's another important piece of information.
So in terms of the agreements for the facilities use, do we, over the year, incur any kind of damage? Or is that anything that's significant or that's ever occurred?
Nothing significant. We have had some minor damage. And again, with Parks and Recreation, some of it's been after-school sports programs. Like when dads were coaching basketball or something and kids decide to do some very minor kind of, you know, I don't even want to use the word vandalism, because they just did things they weren't supposed to do to a property and it had to be fixed up. But again, I would put it in the context of very minor, and Riverside Parks and Rec has been quick to say, what can we do to make it right?
Any other thoughts?
No, I'm just trying to, I was trying to find, I know that we have a policy where we like list all of our IGA. I just, I'll double-check just to make sure that they, all of the ones that we are current, that we currently have are listed, assuming that is how we do it.
And we can check that, I'm just trying to look.
Because the Brookfield, the Brookfield one specifically. But I'd have to look through to see where I believe it falls.
We had talked about listing them, but not including the actual. I think it was some, something we were, we talked about in order to avoid somehow falling behind and having something that had expired.
Keeping it more evergreen so that we wouldn't have to continually, I'll just double-check to make sure.
Yeah, let me know which one you're thinking about, we can check also.
Well, the agreement with the Village of Riverside for crossing guards is not in here.
Oh, right.
It's a board.
That's a good catch.
Yes, thank you. Kathy, the Riverside crossing guard one, that's an, that's an old one, but it should still be left there for review, yeah.
Probably 10 years old at this point.
Yeah, predates me, but, yep. And then we had the orchestra one, and we pulled that one off because it wasn't in effect this past year.
It's no longer really.
Yep.
Any other thoughts on IGAs? Seeing as none, the next item is new business or discussion, which we do not have any. Kathy, have we received any other public comment?
You have not.
Okay. This brings us to future meeting dates. The next meeting will be September 6th of this year, Committee of the Whole in the 7:00 PM in the Blythe Park School Auditorium.
There is no auditorium.
Except there is no auditorium. Jim, Jim, I, Jim, it's a combined gym and auditorium in my mind. Dan or Wesley can note that I can't read things very well. September 20th, regular business meeting, 7:00 PM in this room, which is the LRC. October 4th, Committee of the Whole in the multipurpose room at Central. And October 18th, 7:00 PM, in this room as well. And that. We are going to go back into closed session after this. No, no action will be taken. Dan, do I still need to list the reasons why?
Yes, we'd have to make a motion to return to closed session with the reason why, I think just being the one.
That's proper. Alright, so, we, can I have a motion shortly? Motion to enter into closed session for litigation when action against affecting or unbehaving.
Just the one we have left to discuss, which I think was the closed session.
I can skip the others. This will be for discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purpose of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 206 Illinois Code.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye, and as noted, we will return to open session to close the meeting, but no action is expected to be taken.